Hot in here already, ain't it?
No.
All right. Just us fat guys. Yes. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, October 20th, 2025, beginning at 6:33 PM. Do you want me to start with the pleasurable?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please just send a public comment. I'm like Public's Frank.
Nothing.
Department head committee items.
We'll see your departments.
Guess that can all into fuel rates with Beth, I suppose, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, every year the Board of Selectmen likes to set the estimated tax rate.
Is that on?
Yeah. For the following budget season. So according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, they are estimating that unleaded fuel is going to be $2.90 per gallon and diesel is going to be $3.40 a gallon. Because the town is tax exempt, we don't have to pay the New Hampshire gas tax or the federal gas tax. So on the top of the page, it just shows what you would be paying at the pump. Below that is a chart. It's just the chart that I got right off of U.S. Energy Information Administration. Down below is the estimated gallons that each department will be using in 2026, unleaded and diesel. And then the bottom chart at the bottom is our 2023 default. So the amount on the bottom is in our default budget, but based on the tax rate that, or the tax rate I'm wishing. The fuel rate that you set tonight will determine our 2026 budget for fuel.
You know what our average for 24 or 25 is?
So for unleaded, our average was $2.87 and for diesel, our average was $2.91.
So these gallons that you have for the budget proposed, are they pretty close to what we use?
Yes, yeah. I've been tracking our fuel usage for 11 years now. Well, yeah, since 2015. Some years with a lot of vacancies, you'd see like the police fuel usage go down. Jason's department, when he was had a lot of vacancy, his fuel usage went down. So this is an estimate over the 11 years.
So this is factored for fully here, full complement of people?
Uh huh.
Not that it really weighs into anything I would decide tonight, but you know what we, what we proposed for 25's budget for fuel price, no?
What we wished, $2.78 for unleaded and 302 for diesel. That was going to be in the proposed. If it passed, but it didn't. We got stuck with the default, which was $4.50 for unleaded and $6 for diesel.
And what was the diesel? I'm sorry.
$6. Oh, last year?
Yeah.
$3.02.
Even though fuel is cheaper now than this, you would have the full price. It doesn't mean the seasonal changes and all that, the future, it's not be that.
No. I, so my work, our diesel average was very similar. I don't remember the gas. I think we were $3, but I'd expect them to stay somewhat. You know, not get too volatile. I think it'll stay somewhat averaged out. I agree. I think they will go up a little bit through the winter, but certainly come down a long ways from the from the $4.50 and the $6.
Well, I was really surprised that they estimated diesel at $3.40. Our last delivery of diesel was $3.03.
Yeah.
Well, these guys get their Ouija board out. And they factor in all kinds of stuff like increased production, we need so much supply and we drive up demand. That's how they do their numbers. This is not what we see today.
No.
And they like to be wrong. I don't know. I think this, this is representative, I think, of what we should expect from the budget.
Well, it's a little bit higher than it's a little bit higher than your average, but it was a pretty close to your proposed, a little bit higher, but that was 25 that didn't pass.
We averaged 2.87. They're forecasting 2.90.
Right.
But I thought if we, I started, I was saying if we, and, and we're budgeted for 4.50. So if we went to $3 on unleaded, that's decreasing the budget by $1.50. I'm still 10 cents above the forecast. And then diesel, if you wanted to go, could go with their forecast of 3.40, I guess. I, I don't think it's gonna be. It, it hasn't moved much the last 12 months. It hasn't been very volatile. It's been pretty flatlined.
There is some geopolitical issues that'll probably drive this crazy. And that is Russia's oil. If they want to play a game and restrict their oil on the market to punish Eastern Europe because of alignment with Ukraine, that could be a sizable impact. You know, we don't, we can't, we don't want to bet on that, but I wouldn't go any lower than this. Because I think there's more upside than there is downside. If Europe comes off Russian oil or starts coming off Russian oil, it'll put pressure on the rest of the free world market for refined goods. There's a limited capacity there. I wouldn't go down any. There's suggestion to go hedge.
From their average.
If you want to go from three, how much is that? How many gallons do we have? 3,600? 20 of gasoline? I can't tell.
It's 10 cents more.
Yeah, but how many gallons of gas?
For gas, well, you can leave diesel alone.
1,200 bucks? I mean.
What, what do you mean 1,200 bucks?
It's 10 cents more.
What's 10 cents more?
No, on the bottom first chart, if you go to $3, you said for gas, Benji.
If you went to three, that's 10 cents.
From their average, but it's down from what our budget is from, from 4.50.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Is what I'm saying.
I'm talking about going with the, going with her numbers.
Yeah, so I thought if we went $3, that's 10 cents over their average.
1,200 dollars more here.
Than their prediction.
The impact to our budget going up would be a gain of 1,200.
No. No, it'd be a decrease of
$1.
We talking about the 4.50?
Yeah, that's what our budget is, is 4.50. It doesn't matter what their forecast is.
I think you're both in the same, but it's just
She just brought us what their forecast, but that doesn't matter to that's not any numbers we're figuring now. So if we go from 4.50 to $3, that's obviously $1.50. And what's the usage?
12, 400.
$9,300.
Well, that was
That was 23's.
That was 23. We're looking at that.
Oh, we're looking up here, yeah. So 12, 4.
Yeah.
So it'd be an extra 12,000.
That's $18,600. Difference.
Right.
And then if we went, if we went with their average for the 3.40 instead of the $6 that we're at, then last year we proposed 302. It came in at 2.91, so even come under what we proposed last year, but if we went their average of 3.40, that's still significant deduction from what's budgeted.
Yeah, in the parentheses, there is the difference between the default and the proposed.
But that was
What's that?
In the parentheses, the $143,950.
Off to the right.
Oh, yeah.
It's the difference.
It's the difference.
Yep.
Sticking at the rates that she has there.
So if we change it to $3, we will be $142,710. Less than the 23 default.
One reason I upped it 10 cents is because you're really close to the 2.90, what we averaged this year on the gasoline. It stayed fairly stable.
You said our last diesel was 3.03?
3.03. Our last unleaded was 2.95.
Where'd this 3.40 come from?
That's their
U.S. Energy Information?
Prediction for 26.
Yeah. That's petroleum's prediction.
They're the ones that
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
You guys deal with this a whole lot more than I do.
It's a show in the dark.
I would think the 3.40 would be plenty safe enough. It seems to have been stable. It, I, I don't see it being too volatile and that gives us, you know, that's 50 cents more than the 25 average.
Diesel, you're talking.
For diesel fuel.
And for unleaded, $3?
I would go with $3 only because we're really close to 2, 2.90 now, only 3 cents off of the average.
It was 2.95 the last delivery, right?
Yep.
The last delivery was 2.95.
Yeah.
For gas.
And that's a smaller number, so for some reason, I don't want to make it too tight. I just, I don't. I guess I it's been a few months of being pretty stable. Hopefully it stays somewhat that way. Obviously, there's lots of world factors that could play into it, but right now we're budgeted for $6. We can come down off that a long ways.
So what am I gonna do?
You think 3's enough, though?
For gas?
For gas.
I don't know.
I, I really feel like it's gonna be a little higher.
Do you?
Than 3, yeah.
You keep, keep in mind this is minus the tax, not what you see at the pump.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that.
So what's that? Taxes, what, 41 cents?
Uh huh.
No, 10 cents.
Or 47?
Almost 47, yeah.
You have the tax on here, don't you, Beth?
On the top, very top.
Top, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like 40.
43, 44.
Diesel's a little more.
Yeah. So I mean, that puts the retail at 3.32. I know ours has lasted.
Yep.
I just feel like it might be over 3. Jack alluded to the geopolitical issues and
Well, it all goes out the window if that happens.
Well, yeah, I mean, it'll be
There's nothing good gonna happen with that.
Yeah.
It's like the doomsday.
And the U.S. production has been going up anyways, so
It'll help it.
What's that?
Which will help it.
But it'll help a lot.
But we don't use the U.S. production.
Well, we export
Ship it out.
More than we
Yeah.
Use. I understand that. I don't know. I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking you're right on the diesel.
Yeah.
Leaving at 3.40, but I, I think we should probably consider 3.10 on the gas.
Okay, I'll go with that.
3.10?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Good with that. Okay.
Do we need to vote on that or no?
No.
3.10, 3.40?
What do you think? As finance person, you like it?
Oh, that's fine. I don't know. My crystal ball is not
Why you don't have a crystal ball?
Well, none of us are.
Yeah, the crystal ball. I'm trying to figure out what it's gonna be next year.
Not in the oil industry.
If that's cutting it too tight for your liking, then
No, no, I think we're way over budget with the default. You know, that's crazy, $278,000 in fuel for the vehicles. You know, as we get new vehicles, gas mileage is better, so let's keep pushing for new vehicles.
Fuel was crazy when they set the $6 and, and it was going up at the time. It was in the high 4s, so I don't blame them for setting it at that time.
Post-COVID.
But now we're stuck in that default, so hopefully this is one piece of the budget people will vote for the new budget.
In 2023, we are paying $4.93 for a gallon of diesel. It was high.
It was over 5.
At the pump.
Yeah.
So my car come in, I'm like, oh my god, what do I do now?
Yeah.
If we just ordered a diesel, it shows up and gas is six, diesel $6 a gallon. I'm like, oh.
2026 is gonna be
Two, 3.10 for gas and 2.40 for diesel.
3.40.
3.40.
Yes.
So that'll be a reduction of $141,470.
What?
Beautiful.
41, what?
4.70?
4.70. Anything else for Beth?
Anything for us?
No.
Big Bob?
Really nice.
Yeah, she's even
Both the same way.
Yeah, she's even grabbing that and running.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
I'll start.
The administrators report.
Yeah, the software, I'm not sure where we are with that. Bruce is not here. I do have, Benji, the Duck Pond Agreement that we had told you you could sign the last time.
Yeah.
So if you would sign the back and return it to me, I'll scan it back over. I also threw in your mailbox, the, the last time I did not have the Fremont with the wear on it. Now it has wear on the gravel application. This needs to then go over to the town attorney who will be shipping it out to all them, the gravel operators or gravel permit holders, because we've never done a renewal permit before and we need to. So I don't think I've missed anything. What I just wanted to let you know is I was gonna ask you guys to propose a warrant article to take the gravel and put it back to the planning board, which is like every other community does, where has retained it for some reason. So on the application in the middle, it says this is a new application and submitted to the town aware selectmen slash planning board. So I figured that if your article doesn't pass to give it to the planning board, then it would stay here and your application's really not changing much. This came to us recommended from the town engineer. This used to be the town of Fremont and we just took and put our logo and our wear everywhere that Fremont was.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, I will send it off to town council.
Do you want to say it, Jack?
Yep.
Jack and
We sat with Steve Keach.
Steve Keach and Steve Whitley, yeah.
Back a month ago, whatever it was. Pretty straightforward, I think. And he's, he's familiar with it because he's probably drafted for Fremont.
The, there is, this package, I'm gonna just do it with you afterwards. These are all the deeds for the tax auction. I need you to sign and then I need to ship them back, but we can do that after. There's 10 documents here. You guys, I don't know if this is the right place or the wrong place. You guys got an email from the Lynch family. Do you want to do that under correspondence? It has to do with a bench in the cemetery. So typically you guys, as the Sextons and the trustees are in charge, typically there's always a headstone, not a bench. So if you go down the first entrance to Pine Grove New Section, first left, go around the corner. At the very, very last spot, that family bought the lot along the very edge. So what they would like to do is in honor of their son, they'd like to do a bench versus a headstone, and you people are the only ones that can make that distinction. So it's not gonna be like in the middle of the cemetery. It's basically, here's the edge of their lot and here's the edge of where it drops down. So it's not gonna be in anybody's way. It's gonna be back under the trees.
Is it instead of a headstone?
It's gonna be instead of a headstone, they'd like a bench for the family.
Absolutely.
You guys okay with that?
It'll be like a footstone, kinda, right?
Well, so you can have a headstone and then you can have the footstones inlaid in the flat, but the, instead of the headstone.
Bench will be instead of the footstone, kinda.
Say that again?
Instead of the headstone.
Where the footstones would be.
No, no, instead of the headstone, where everybody has a headstone, they'd like to do a bench.
Yep, well, it's fun.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll let her know. Avatar, we are for 26, we're doing a townwide update. So this came from the state of New Hampshire. We need to have the contract from Avatar signed and submitted. So what I have is the contract, but I also need, this is what you guys signed, not you guys. I'm sure the board has changed. This was the bid for 2023 to 2027. It was a five-year bid. Their information is in here. I only kept it as a copy. What we need is for the Board of Selectmen to sign this. Now, when you get to the amount, the amount has been collectively spread out equally, so even though this says your reevaluation's gonna be 147,960, it's, keep in mind, it's been spread out, because 2026 is a reevaluation year.
What's 146,900?
It's the cost of the reevaluation. So everybody, values will change, tax rate will go down, but it's done every five years and the state sent a letter and then Avatar has put together the contract per their contract and I'll
If the old contract ran to 27, why are we doing it?
Because it, just to show you and remind you what you did, it's not the same people. So she wanted to show you what was happened in 23 so that the document here reflects what we bid on and accepted in 23. That's the only reason this is here.
I understand that. You said it was five years, so that runs to 27.
This runs to 27.
Why are we doing it?
So what I want to just turn you to the page is in, when you accepted the bid or the town accepted the bid, 147,960 is in the contract here. It also is in the document here for you to sign for us to send to the state.
No raise?
No, we bid on a price for five years.
Oh, she'd do this annually?
No, no. We, every five years, we put this out to bid.
I get that, but why are we doing that, though?
Because every five years you do this and it doesn't correspond with this. It's always a year off for some reason.
Oh.
So this goes to 27, this is 26, but I just wanted you to show this is what was previously signed. And this needs to be signed by at least three of you. There's three spots and it says sign here. We tagged you all. Okay, moving on, the, and it doesn't need a motion. It's just got three signature blocks. The RFP for the East Barn, East Street Barn Roof Replacement was due Friday. We did not get an email. We did not get anybody calling for that, so I got nothing to report.
God.
MRI, I'd like to have that discussion. I've got a little bit more that I'd like to add to it. Can we do that at the end, just quickly, under non-public?
Yep.
Okay.
Oops, I thought we
It should be tied together, okay. Deliberative session we've set for Saturday, January 31st. Steve Whitley reached out. We've always had town council there. Do you guys want town council there?
Yeah.
Yes. And proposed budget schedule has not changed. Your next meeting, you will see the finance administrator with the default revenues and CIP. Then the 10th, you don't have a meeting, and then the 17th, you're gonna see the entire 26 budget, but doing a little different this year. Beth's gonna present you all of the pages with the department heads present. And then you're gonna go away with that that night and the following week, you'll digest that and bring back the department heads for questions. But if we let Beth do the entire top to bottom, then you're not looking at how many printouts like you were last year. We're gonna try it a little different.
I think they'd be prepared to explain changes.
Right, and, and, but we're gonna try it, because remember, it's like, what copy are you looking at? What copy are you looking at? So we were gonna do one run after she does the default the first night. Then the 10th, you're not having a meeting, but the 17th, they'll run then, top to bottom
Yep.
with everything. Then the 24th, you guys can digest it between the 17th and the 24th. And when you come back on the 24th, the department heads will be there and hopefully you'll have any questions or something. If something glaring at you, you're welcome to ask it on the 17th, but so that is all I had, just like I said, the auction paper. I've got one more thing I need to add for the MRI. Hang on. Nope, that's all I got, Benji. Unless anybody has any question.
Nope. Leave us the manifest.
Yeah, it's the wrong one.
That's all I need, the 3.
Luke, to order the treasurer to sign the payroll accounts payable, manis, payable checks dated October 23rd, 2025 is included in the following manifest. Payroll manifest, $83,592.25 per weekly payroll. Accounts payable manifest, $39,279.61. Supplemental accounts payable manifest, 36, uh, $30,600. To start, accounts payable manifest, $250,000. Where school accounts payable manifest, $250,000. For a total of 653,471.86. The following manifest was previously ordered to sign at the October 6th, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. Payroll manifest, $82,279.81, check dated 10/16/2025. Accounts payable manifest, $119,675.49, check dated 10/16/2025. As there is no Selectmen meeting scheduled for October 27th, 2025, please vote to order the treasurer to sign payroll checks dated October 30th, 2025, estimated to be about $95,000. Furthermore, to order the treasurer to sign the amount, sign up to the amount of $95,000 per accounts payable that cannot wait till the next scheduled meeting. Reports, actual check amounts will be reported to the Board of Selectmen by inclusion of the manifest memo at the next scheduled meeting. I have a second on that.
Second.
Second. Call favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Benji, I have one on the bottom here. There's two places for the town to sign. It says bond required by the town. Please check yes or no. And if you do check yes, it's gonna cost you an additional $5,928, but we usually do not have the bond. So I need another set of signatures down here. Sorry. Just before it gets bounced back. The only set of minutes I have is 10:04, which I just put out there, on the very bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the ones from the auction is the minutes, so I don't know if you're ready for those or not ready for those. I just sent them out today.
I've not seen them.
I haven't seen them.
Okay, so we'll table.
So are you recommending you check no?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. I say no. I mean, that's, sorry. So the minutes we'll table.
Any Selectmen committee updates?
Yes. I am relieved and excited at the fact that this Conservation Commission finally agreed to a solution for the duck pond estates. Combined with duck pond, install a leveler with a pond level so that the beaver won't disturb it seasonally and then have a 100-foot buffer on the commercial piece along the hill. That was done last Wednesday. Benji and I sat through that. I haven't seen anything since, so I'm assuming it's progressing through legal or whatever has, has to happen.
Yeah, I just had him sign the agreement, because Conservation signed it, Benji's gonna sign it, and then
Good.
it goes back to Ernie to sign and then we're done. And then he's got 90, 60 days to get to the planning board.
All right, perfect. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, Energy Commission met and they're looking to enter an agreement with Kirsarg. I don't know if you've all seen this or not. There's, um, Kirsarg is required to give back to the towns that request it. We don't have to provide anything. We don't have to do anything. We just have to say, yes, we'd like the money. It's a, it's a rebate on our electric bills. The only properties that wouldn't be included would be the public safety, because there's gonna be a solar array on there.
Opposed.
Pardon me?
Proposed.
It's proposed, but, and
Zero cost.
Zero cost. And the highway department, public works area, in case they ever do want to put a solar farm out there, that wouldn't be included. So basically So basically what this is, is free money to the town off of the electric bills and they would, they take a look at all the.
Money.
I'm sorry?
How much money? How much money?
Hundreds of dollars, at least.
We'll say.
Yeah, it, it, I think, I forget the exact amount that he said, but I think it's a few thousand dollars a year. Three or four thousand, I think.
This is most solar credits?
Solar credits, exactly.
Yeah.
We don't have to do anything, uh, except agree to accept the money. We don't have to, um, monitor anything. We don't have to.
The way solar credits work, if you, you can prove you generated so many kilowatts a year. Uh, they can be sold on the open market and companies go in, broker these to be sold on the open market. Places like, I don't know if it's New Hampshire, but places like New Jersey, if part of their government require offset of energy credits.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why people buy these, so they can still use their dirty oil, you know, fuel. But yeah, look green outside, so.
Yeah, Kirsarge Energy is required by law to provide these credits to towns
Yep.
that request it. So.
So we're gonna get our energy.
All we have to do is request
Yeah.
and provide some electric bills and they give us a check. But it requires, uh, buy-in by the select board.
Yeah.
So. I didn't see any downside. I didn't speak for us, but I, I said I would bring it to us and, uh, see what you all thought about it, but I don't see a downside. So if you're in agreement, I'll find out from, uh, energy commission chair, what we need to do and what is required from us specifically.
Okay.
If you want me to do that, then I will.
I don't think about it, so do you guys know something?
Free money. I'll email them.
Yeah, I, I don't know all the specifics, so once we, once we get all, all of that, we can take a look at.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, this is pretty much it, yeah, so. But I will.
It looks like they're generating enough in the Stratford area for covering where.
Yeah.
That's what the back map shows. It says they have enough that they've generated for where.
Yeah.
Right there in that back.
Yep.
So they wanna build more solar farms, which would increase the amount that they'd have to outweigh the towns as a reimbursement.
Yeah, what they're doing is approaching, I think, landowners to put solar farms in. It's kinda like the, the lease for the cell towers. But they want you to tie up your land to put in for solar.
Yep.
And these guys take care of it and, I guess, monitor it and they pay you a monthly fee or an annual fee to use your land. Um, but it's to generate all the credits.
So as I understand it, if we, if we agree that we wanna participate, they'll take a look at our electric bills for each of the buildings that we would designate. You know, town hall, south fire, east.
Town office, town hall will take quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Library.
They would not do DPW or it was suggesting?
They would not.
No, okay.
They, they wanna exclude that, just in case they ever wanna do a solar farm out there.
You wanna do a solar farm on the transfer station?
Yeah.
And you wanna do your own?
Just fine.
Because if you're generating your own, you're not eligible for credits on that.
You don't get enough sun down there to melt stone till July and you can't.
I wouldn't wanna put a solar farm.
You can't put it on the landfill, so they'll never put one down there, but that's all right.
Something you'd be able to say, dig it up and.
Oh.
But that's a rule, that's always why I asked it.
Yeah.
That's the energy commission, uh, chairman's wish, is that we would leave it out, just in case.
Well, I guess that was my question. It was Kirsarge or the energy commission, because you're never gonna put one down there.
Mm-hmm. And I can, I can tell them that.
I don't know what.
Because that, I mean, public works, I'm sure they use a pretty good charge.
Put them on the landfills, it screws up. We gotta drill through the liners and stuff. For just another towns and we have enough problem with that, but.
Yeah, with the liners slid twice, so.
So.
Yeah, I do know that, uh, I do know that a lot of solar arrays go on.
Does it have to be on that?
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe.
Does it have to be on that property for the town to benefit for the generation? Does it have to be on that property for the town aware to benefit for the generation?
Uh, I would say no.
I'm, I'm not following your question.
So did you have the solar?
We had another piece of land.
Right.
Not DPW. And we just wanted to generate electricity, get paid for using that.
If we're not using electricity for a town building, I would say we would probably still benefit.
Okay, then, so you could.
But if we're generating electricity to use on town buildings, they certainly wouldn't
But I'm just saying.
reimburse us for that.
If the DPW puts solar on the future.
Mm-hmm.
The town aware still needs more power than it generates.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
So you could put a site someplace else.
They would be excluded from that.
Yeah.
Just like for the proposed, for the safety building. They would exclude any electric bills that we had that included the safety building. They wouldn't, they wouldn't look at it. We wouldn't probably give it to them in the first place. Because that's gonna have its own solar, so.
Even though the safety complex only generate half?
It's only gonna generate half.
Uh, that's not, that's not part of the calculus. It's just, that building will have solar on it, so it's not
Okay.
eligible.
Gotcha. So you'll see what needs next steps.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kit with the.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yep, very good. That's all I have.
Maybe I got a nod no from you. You don't have anything?
I'm sorry?
I think I got a nod no from you. You don't have anything with that?
I don't.
Well, double check.
You haven't had a meeting either, right?
No.
Not since.
Not since.
Alright, you guys have.
Tomorrow.
Alright.
That's right, too.
So you'll be next, next week. Unless you're going to.
I'm going away, so, yeah.
I would like to go in under B and C.
Yep, so we have any correspondence on the business first?
No, I did my correspondence with the headstone.
Well, yeah, I wanted to bring up, it just irked me a little bit and I don't know if it requires a vote, if we can even take a vote, but I guess, uh, I've only been part of three boards or committees and that would be this one, the planning and cemetery. And we always do the pledge of allegiance at the beginning and I went to a different meeting the other night and it was overlooked and I found out there's at least one other board that doesn't do it or committee possibly, but I think it should be part of it. It's part of the public meeting in a public building. I don't care what the committee name is or what the public building is. Or the, this place is condemned for bad paint color and we have to go to the old town hall, still ought to be done over there, too, so. I don't, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, if we could, if we could require that, make me feel better about it, I guess.
I, I gotta tell you, during the energy meeting the other night, we didn't, we didn't, for the, there's been three meetings since I've been ex officio. I did miss one prior to last week and they hadn't done it. And I just, I didn't know if that's just how that operated or not, but I'd be happy to bring it up and, uh.
I'm part of other committees in other towns and, and one of them, there's only three of us on it and we get up and do it.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna disagree. I think it's the right thing to do.
How they require the vote and all the.
I don't know, do you want me to, um, I can send out a memo on behalf of the board stating that the pledge of allegiance should be part of every beginning of a meeting.
Sure.
Beginning of the public session of the meeting.
Yeah.
I like it.
Just a little.
Yeah, no, I, forget it.
Any other correspondence of the business? I don't know.
We, we did get the one question about, uh, metal detecting on, on town property.
Oh, that's the one I meant to look up. Yeah, uh, so what we used to do is, um, I didn't, the last time we did it, we asked them for specifics, not just cart blanch along all town property. Like, was it in a ball field? Was it conservation? Was it somewhere else? And I meant to reply to that, I apologize. So I don't think we have a rule, probably state law provides the rule, but I think you wanna know where they might be. Like if ding ding, what, what does it make for noise?
Yeah.
Whatever the noises and then have to dig a hole.
Right.
You know what I mean? You don't want it somewhere that's gonna be. You don't, no, you don't wanna.
They're, they generally do it in a very small hole to find the specific thing.
I don't, never done it.
And then they, and then they put the, they, you know, they dig a plug, dig down, find what their coin or whatever it is, then they put everything back.
Okay.
So the fact that he, A, the fact that he's asking.
Yeah.
Uh, and he specifically spells that out.
Yes.
And he's prob, you know, I don't know the individual, but he's probably been doing this for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And they generally do a good job of, of what they're doing.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Right.
I guess I'd be just, you know, make sure that it's not on a, you know, well-manicured lawn, I suppose.
This is one of them things I wished you wouldn't ask, because it raises all those questions, like you said.
Well, I just didn't know, yeah.
I'd just be curious, you know, I, I'd just be.
It's also liability issue. If they, if they dig down and they hit a wire, is it our responsibility, you know, if they?
Well, that's what I was wondering.
All this other liability issues that, that go along with it. If they slip and fall down a hill, are we responsible, you know?
I don't think so, you know, if you, see, I know those things, but if you're hunting on town property, you know.
Yeah, they come here and get permission. So he's asking for permission to do it. I know we have had them ask before, cause people will do it like under the bleachers of a ballgame, cause typically that's where you lose things.
Right.
You know, that's not in anybody's way.
Be a waiver form like, hole fill to somebody's house type of deal, gets us out of it and.
And if they dig up
I don't know.
copper wire, thinking it's, yeah.
That's one of them things. I have absolutely no problem with it. No wonder if we ought to have some sort of silly little policy eventually that says
Are there any?
You can't go dig up the middle of the baseball field.
I wanna be clear, I don't, I don't have a problem in the world with it either. I think, you know, it's a nice thing to do, but.
Yes, there's a couple sprinkled fields.
Should we restrict from that being?
Well, that's the thing. I mean, I think we had, I don't know. That's why I wonder if there ought to be some sort of little policy. I don't have a problem with it. I don't wanna turn it into a big deal, but. And I don't think this person probably is, but it raises a question if there ought to be a policy about it, so.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I know he's asking for any, any and all town properties that, you know, you're probably not gonna go into the middle of the best, you know, ba- baseball diamond and do it there.
Without saying.
You're gonna be more interested in finding the, the old cellar holes and, and looking around there. You know, in which case generally you're, you know.
Are we giving this to a person?
This would be a, a person.
I would think that, yeah, at the very least, they gotta come get a liability waiver from the town. Which we do in other instances, so. If it's worth a million dollars, you gotta split it five ways with the board.
I would just be curious, I would just be curious what kind of, what kind of historical artifacts are found.
Yeah.
You know, I.
I know in twenty, I looked this up before, but I didn't, twenty eighteen, I think. Um, we had it in the minutes, cause I did, after I got that email, I went to look it up, but now I can't find it.
Cause that's where you would assume they're gonna look and that's where you'd assume you'd find something that'd be neat to be at the museum, you know?
They're gonna be, they might find a sh, an old shoe buckle or a, you know. Maybe they'll find a, maybe they'll find an eighteen hundreds coin or something.
I know someone found an old brass platoon that wasn't on town property, but down in east where, where the mills all were.
Right.
It was looking cool. I guess we're letting them metal detect. We kinda gotta let them have it, I would think.
I mean, I can ask a little more questions. I mean, if there's a waiver, you're thinking that, come on.
See if other communities deal with this, what the waiver be. I know people, I see them all the time out in them hayfields over there and, well, I shouldn't say all the time. I've seen them out in them hayfields over there in Henniker on Old Concord Road, metal detecting, you know.
Right.
I don't personally have a problem. I just don't know what we ought to have for rules in place of it, that's all.
I know, like I said, in eighteen, someone asked us, cause I happened to take it and I'm like, I remember and I looked through policies, I looked through everything else, but there was some minutes and referred to just permission, but they needed to know where.
We own so much public land, the public should be, have access to it, but if you're metal detecting, you're probably going to a few particular areas, you know. I'm sure.
I remember the last time we talked about something about.
Hot spot to go, you know, so.
Like artifacts or something, I don't remember. But I certainly said, would you like me to see what other towns do and then?
I would, I guess, and just see if it's a simple waiver. So I don't wanna make it more complicated.
Yeah, we don't wanna discourage it by making it cumbersome, but we just wanna make sure we're protected to.
For saying town, you know, as opposed to all town land, we do town forests, you know, the, any, you know, any old cellar hole. I mean, I don't, I'm, you know, however that. That's right, because like I said, I don't think they're gonna wanna go to, uh, the middle of the football field or they're gonna go to.
Right.
That's where your sprinkler systems are.
In front of the, you know, the stone building, I, you know.
Go to the town hall, take copper out of it.
No, really?
No, I'm just kidding, but I'm all for it. Just see if, what we ought to do.
Okay. I don't have anything, we're so far ahead for eleven-three. The only thing I've got is what is probably ample. If you look at the agenda that I've given you for the budget.
Yeah.
I think that is enough with Beth.
Probably enough, yeah.
Right, that's what I mean with Beth and CIP.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that would be enough unless there's some earth shaking. So, but we'll touch base, obviously. Okay, that's all I have.
I guess for that, we're gonna, before we adjourn, we're gonna go on the non-public and that should be under.